Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Lebanon Town Council. Appreciate everyone being here. We're on business in front of us tonight. We're honored to have you with us. Glad to see our minister here with us for our invocation. As he will address us, as we all know, this is a special day that we should never forget and always in our memories. So at this time, we can all rise for our invocation. Follow me to the prayers, please.
Town eleven, all of us that can remember that day know where we were, know how we felt as we saw those images on TV. If we pray for those who we know, the first responders who ran in as others who ran out and then so many that couldn't make it out. Keep them in our prayers. Keep Doyle Fields in our prayers as he is taking treatments and dealing with cancer. And so, as he is not with us tonight, we hold him in our prayers. Let us go to the Lord. Precious Lord, as we gather, as we gather for the Town Council of Lebanon, Virginia, you have blessed us so much on board with this beautiful community, this environment in which we live. We ask you to be with all who are part of this Town Council on this evening. Be with Mayor Tony Noddy as he leads us. Be with those who speak. Be with us as our hearts are heavy on this day. As you know, the lives lost on this day in 2001. We pray for Doyle Field, some member of this council, suffering at this moment. Dealing with those words we none of us want to hear, but we know we can deal with it and we can be healed from it. For it is by your power and by your hand that touches each one of us. Be with us as a community, as we thrive and as we grow. We do this and ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and our Lord. Amen.
Praise the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands and one nation under God, in the visual and liberty and justice brought.
Council members, have any additions at this time? Hearing those or motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Is there a second? You have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear y'all, I'll just try that again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Also, we received our minutes for our August council meeting. Everyone had a chance to review those. Is your motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
You have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Mr. Short, we're now down to accounts. Do you have any additions to what we already have?
Yes, sir. It's your station there, Section B.
Section B, okay.
Mayor, I'm moved to approve that August account's payable as presented, as amended.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We're very pleased tonight to recognize one of our own. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chief of Police, Mr. Disk, Chief Disk, if you could come forward.
We just wanted to recognize Officer Kayla Helbert. She just recently, last week, graduated, graduated the Law Enforcement Basic Academy. She spent twenty-two weeks down there away from her family, away from us, training, preparing to do this job. Got word today, which we weren't worried, but it was still nice to have word. We got word today that she passed her state parole test. Out of two hundred and twenty questions, she missed working. So, passed in the top, actually, very poor scores, a top ninety-two percent of the state of Virginia. So, we are very proud of you. We're glad to have you. We've been trying to get her to come on with us for a long time while we talk her into development. So, the Town of Lebanon is very lucky and happy to have you with us. So now, what we like to do to make it official is, once they get through graduation, certificate from U.T.A.D. and everything, finish FTO, and I would like you guys to join me now in introducing Ms. Helbert to the law enforcement and code of ethics. If you raise your right hand, please. As a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve mankind, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, weak against oppression and intimidation, and the peaceful against violence, and to respect the constitutional rights of all men to liberty, equality and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, maintain courageous calm in the face of danger, scorn or ridicule, develop self-restraint and be constantly mindful of the welfare of others. Honest and thought indeed in both my personal and official life. I will be exemplary in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of my department. Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature or that is confided to me in my official capacity, will be kept every secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty. I will never act officiously and permit personal feelings, prejudice, animosities or friendships to influence my decisions. With no compromise for crime and relentless pursuit, pursuit of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear or favor, malice or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence and never accepting gratuitous. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and I accept it as a public trust to be held as long as I am true to the ethics of the police service. I will constantly strive to achieve those objectives and ideals dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement. Do you at this time promise to treasure, promote and protect the Lebanon, the Town of Lebanon?
I do.
If you could forward, would you like to shake your hand?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done, young lady. Well done.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, Ms. Lynn, do we have any further requests? We've assigned a poll. I'll go with this list after we finish the one that's already on the agenda. Do we, is it Ms. White, Stewie? You're here representing the Sabida group. Do you wish to make any comments or anyone here? Is there a spokesman for you all?
We're, we're just here to attend today.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank you. Alright. Hey, Chief, if you, can you move that podium out just a little bit, please?
Ms. King's actually eliminated, she's first. I have her Virginia string up on that thing. Sorry.
Sorry. Move the podium a little bit. Let me deal with folks standing up here. Linda, Linda, where are you? Is it Ms. King or you? Will be with you, Short.
Sounds good. I think he's even just on the run, I Joe. Next Thursday night. At the, we're going to do it at the middle school.
The community?
Yep.
What time?
Doors will open at six for Mark Mayor. He will start at seven. I really hope y'all come and attend because I really think y'all will be blessed. I got all the bracelets and stuff in that we ordered for all the schools today. We've got bracelets for all the kids. And everything is set up as far as with all the schools. He's excited to come and we're excited to have him here. So, please come join us next, next Thursday night if you can. I think y'all will be blessed and, like I said, doors will open at six and he will start at seven. And we just want to thank y'all again for your contribution and all that you care about the kids at this camp.
We thank you.
We appreciate it.
For you all to be ready and working with those folks.
Thanks.
Like you do, thank you. Ms. Hop, Diane Hop, how are you?
Didn't realize I was about to come up here.
You don't have to, but if you're kind of...
Two things I would like to address. One, the bowl water notice. I did not realize we had one until it was removed. I was told when I called down here that the notice was put on the town website and on Facebook. I don't have Facebook and wouldn't have any reason to be on the town website. Is there any other way? Emails or text messages or anything that we can get a bowl of water notice?
Yes, ma'am. We actually, we did contact the S.O.Z. also, but we also have, we're implementing, process of implementing a text service right now. We're doing training on that right now.
Okay, thank you. And the next one, I'm sure will not be a popular one, but it's the cats on West Banner Street. And I found out yesterday and that, that we have approximately ten feral cats at any given time if you walk them through there. One of the neighbors has eight new kittens at her house, which is going to grow into eight more cats. There's three people that I know of feeding them. I guess my concern, there are several of the neighbors, Jessica, myself. I cannot walk through my yard without watching each step I take for stepping in cat feces. In front of my home, you cannot open the door without that smell. Three of the houses. I don't have pets, I don't want pets. The male cats spray my front door, they spray the siding. I just had to shovel up about a hundred and fifty dollars in rubber mulch that was full of dried cat feces. And I don't know what I'm going to put back down. Now they moved over to the other side of the rubber mulch. They destroy the property. If someone comes to my home and I cleaned inside and they walk up to the front door, all they smell and it is a sickening smell. I stepped in it and tracked it in my home. And I know we have an ordinance for dogs, but there's nothing for cats. And I'm just speaking on behalf of several of the neighbors that could not be here, that feel like I do. Something needs really to be done. I don't know what can be done, but if we have to be responsible for our dogs, why can't the people that's feeding these cats? I mean, they're all on East Banner Street, none are on West Banner Street, which tells me they're there for those...
Opposite, West Banner Street, not...
I mean, on West Banner, I'm sorry. They are a true nuisance.
To the animals as well, because I'd like to stand up. Sure, hold on. I have the neighbor in front of I am. And I do have a cat, I have a dog. The cats have been a nuisance to our dog. We've had to put our dog on anxiety medication that she has to take daily because of the cats. They will literally, they'll, they'll just come in front of her and just, we have a fenced in yard. I have a collar on my dog. If we take my dog outside the fenced in yard, we have a leash on my dog. These are rules that I have to abide by or else they will take my dog. So, I would just expect the same respect from the other people who, like Diane said, are feeding these cats. They're promoting these cats who continue to birth litter after litter after litter after litter. And these cats are coming on our property without our permission. These cats are coming into my yard at nighttime. Our dog is an inside-outside dog, so she comes inside at nighttime. She does spend most of her time outside during the day. And she just spends hours upon hours just barking, 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 to the point where we've had to put her on anxiety medication. And then when we do bring her inside, then all the cats come into our yard. And then they're using the bathroom in the yard and they're all over the thing. So in the morning, as soon as we let her out, she spends a good hour just sniffing herself into hyperventilation because of the cats. So, if we have to abide by the rules with our dogs, because if I, if I let my dog out of my fenced in yard and it runs over into somebody else's property, they can come take my dog. They will. I have to have a ready tag for my dog, my dog has to be registered. All these things have to take place in order for me to have this dog. It's a luxury to own a cat. It's not a necessity or a right. And these people are, like Diane said, there's several people down the street who are feeding the cats. Our neighbor, the neighbor directly beside me owns one cat. There is only one cat that has ownership on this entire, you know, West Banner Street. But he comes home and dumps out a giant bag full of dog, or of cat food on the porch and then all the cats run and eat and then the next neighbor does the same thing. They deal, but none of them take responsibility for having the cats spayed or neutered. The neighbor beside us did have their cat spayed because she had already birthed, had two litters, okay? She'd already, yeah, she'd already birthed two litters. We complained to the point to where they finally got her spayed, but all these others are just running rampant. They are terrorizing us, they're terrorizing our homes, terrorizing our pets. And it's not fair to the cats either. I mean, they didn't ask for that. I mean, they were born there, they think that's where they live. But it's not fair for these cats to be birthed in litter after litter after litter. It's animal cruelty, honestly. So, I don't know what can be done about it, but we would appreciate anything if it's wanted.
Well, there's, there's possibly two or three things another chief is aware. Have y'all had any dealings, I'm curious, with animal control in the county? Are you all those residents, have y'all talked to animal control?
They won't take cats.
The problem is, even with us, they have quite out told us to do not bring us cats.
No, they will not.
That's been our issue. I've spoken with, with a couple of your neighbors and then one that I'm sure you referred to as any problem. The problem is, is, I mean, we absolutely understand the problem and however great it is, the problem isn't.
There's nothing that you can do.
Like you just said, what can you do?
Yeah, there's nothing, there's no...
Animal control has, has absolutely forbid, do not bring us cats. We will not accept cats. If we, if we show up with a cat, they will not take it. We, what we have done, attempted to do is, if we've been able to, we've tried to catch some and relocate them. The problem is, is, you know, the, the instinct of the feline is to return them where they know they're going to be fed. And the issue is, is there are several problem, problem issues in town, people that just drive through town feeding cats. They, they park it several different places in town with bags of cat food and they just feed cats. We've asked them and asked them to stop. We've asked business owners that they're stopping on to, to allow us to tell them not to be in their business for the purpose of feeding cats. They just don't give us that authority. The only thing we've been, we, we have tried to do is, you know, is extend, if you are able to live trap these or anything, we will come and find a way to try to relocate them somewhere, but we just can't promise you they won't come back. But we'll try everything we can to take them away. As far as, and it's worded kind of funny, it's one of these things where, you know, sometimes legislated, there's the way the law is, is and there's the way the law should be. And state law actually says that, that you're required to fence animals out of your house, not somebody's...
Right.
I don't have, I'm not required to keep my dog out of your yard, you're required to keep my dog out of your yard.
Right.
And it's silly how it's worked like that. So, by law, you're required to keep the cats out of your yard and not somebody required to keep them come in. And it's just crazy.
Yeah, I hope we all have ten-foot footprints.
And even with, even with the, with the ten-foot, it's a cat's...
That's what I'm saying, a ten-foot...
So, we get the problem and we will absolutely put our hands together, if anybody we can try to find a solution. It's just, it's a problem that I don't see...
Have you spoken to Margaret Mitchell? Because there was, at one point in time, and that's when we talked about this like a year or so ago, that there was a lady from Margaret Mitchell that would live trap the animals and then spay and neuter them and then release them again.
I had not spoken to them. I did speak with some people at the veterinary office here in Hamilton. And what they told us is if we brought the animals to them and they needed care, they would take care of them, but they would not house them.
Yeah. But they'll take care of them if you bring them?
Well, they, they just said if an animal's brought, they said if an animal's brought to us that needs care, we will, we will take care of it, but we will not house them.
Not unless you accept their financial responsibility.
That's the thing.
You have to accept, because we had a litter of kittens, if you remember last year, that were, this mother had birthed so many litter kittens that were starting to be the one hit four. And they were born in Waddle Kitty Center. And I took them to the vet and they said, well, we're not going to do anything for this, this kitten at all, it's just going to die unless you accept financial responsibility for it.
Mr. Phil, do you have any comments on this? Do we have any, I don't know.
I would like to just say one, I kind of looked all this up in Google a bit when I meant to come before, but the gestation time for a cat is two months. And they've got a litter on average of four kittens.
And the one gentleman that I spoke with, which is Jordan across the road from you, actually refers to the dozen cats on his property as his pets. So, I mean, he's referring to them as his pets, which brings him to a whole nother problem because...
Legally, yeah.
Legally, you would remove somebody's pet, so it makes it a whole...
Were there any legal ramifications to having your dog, your cat spayed or neutered like there is for a dog? Like if I adopt a dog from, from the, the Russell County Animal Shepherd, then I am required to have that dog spayed or neutered. So, if you had said ownership of a pet, is there no... Would they actively spay or neuter?
My logic applies to...
Well, even with that, it's hard to figure out. It's tough for our attorney, let him do a little digging for us, see what remedies, if there are any, that we can collectively work toward.
If you are able at all to, to live trap these, we'll be happy to...
These are okay.
Take them and, and take them. The problem is, is where are we taking them to, you know? We'll try to find a, somewhere that's not someone's private property, obviously, but,
So, let me ask you this. If I'm going to live trap them, I need to do that on my property? Like I can't not trap them on his property? Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I want to...
It's not going to be a problem to live trap them, live trap them at all.
And, and to that aspect, I can't promise you that. Because the feline's ability to return to its social...
Mr. Butler. This is saying almost...
All right. This is not a given, Sam. I want to talk to you about the stormwater situation down on my property. It's, my wife and I have a property that's directly across from the fire station. And that is the low point in the road down there. Just to kind of paint a picture, if you leave where Northbrook Drummond is, it's all downhill to the fire station. And if you are on the other side, where Eastally Coleman is, it's all downhill to the fire station. But even more so than that, if you look at that basket that is collecting through that northern side, you've got the water from C.G.I. coming in, in the direction of the fire station. Housing, garden side, I can say. You've got the, all of Highlands, Highlands Drive, I think it's called. You've even got over some of the water from, from the elementary school is, is pitching in the direction, coming back towards me. And then on top of that, you've got all kinds of businesses inside. And you've got the county building, which has acres and acres of paving and building, roof of which obviously where the water comes off really quick. You've got the church up there's got a big, the Lebanon Christian Fellowship Church. They've expanded here, so you've got more and more parking lot there where the water's coming off really quick. To give you an idea of the pipe that is behind the fire station, comes under the road, comes across the fire station, goes under the road where I am, below Spott, goes across my fire, across my parking lot, past my buildings and drops off on the backside where Twin Circle Drive is. Everything looked pretty good on Saturday as far as the water flowed on the street. I came down on Saturday because of, because of the rain. When the monster storm, but I mean, it was enough that, I'm probably going to have to check things. And I did. And the piping that was coming through the, under the road, out the back of my property, was close to capacity. It still had some, it's, it's still going to take us more, but it was near capacity. But the pipe that it leads to, at, to Stamper's property, it was beyond capacity. It was overflowing, it was creating ponding. It had, it was this pretty broad river down through there. The catch basin in front of the Stamper's, in front of Will Stamper's, no one, catch basin to collect the water, it was actually working in reverse. It's pretty impressive, we should water up. All of this went down towards the river. What's it called? The River Church. A good name for it. All went down through there, across their property to the creek. Creek was two, three feet below. You know, it was coming across and it was dropping a couple of feet to get into the creek, so the creek was no problem at all. I like my, I like my neighbors up there, but I'm not here to tell you about the hardship they had. It's the hardship that I had. The water that was in the wastewater system was coming through the pipe, but it could not go into the, to the, the next pipe because it was beyond capacity. Consequently, all of that stormwater was ponding behind my building. It was ponding in there. It's, it's not the first time it's happened. It's happened numerous times before. It was the deepest that I've ever seen. Couple of years ago, I spoke to the mayor and spoke to Mr. Hughes. What's his first name?
Billy.
Billy Hughes. And we had a problem back then when the town came right out. And, I mean, they were out there within a couple of days, dug up some pipe, made some improvements, very responsive, but I was happy about it. But it didn't fix the problem because I don't think, I don't think that that rainstorm we had on Saturday was a record breaker. So, the, the point being, at some, you got a problem down there, at some point you're going to have to address it because every time somebody pays, every time a new building goes in, it's kicking more water down the hill to me quicker. I had three of my four basement spaces flooded out. Once the piping had a chance to catch up, then everything drained out. But this wasn't, this wasn't a, a situation where I had nice clean rainwater that couldn't go into the pipe. This was a situation where the pipe was kicking the stormwater through and putting it in my... This was a situation where the pipe was kicking the stormwater through and putting it in my, in my parking lot. So you've got something down there that needs to be addressed because obviously we all like to see new buildings and new, new progress in the town. But within that basin, you got a problem down there that, uh, this is going to have to be addressed.
So the pipe's handling, if I'm hearing you right, it's on the backside where the other pipe is overrun, it can't handle it. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Drew, I think if you would, if you could make a note, maybe you and Billy, go out there and I will, let's take Hank with you maybe. Because if we can, I mean, I can understand it if you've got this bigger pipe dumping that kind of water into that round pipe, it's coming back to you, that's what's happening. So, well.
That is what's happening. In addition, I mean, the fact that, uh, catch basin was working in reverse and actually shooting water up, somehow it was giving a whole lot of pressure to send that water down to that point and couldn't get it. I mean, it, it was looking for the easiest way out. So, um.
And did you say the creek down behind River, River Church wasn't overflowing?
Correct. The creek was, the creek, it had a lot more, a lot more capacity. It's, it's the piping that it's going down through there that's causing the problem.
Right. Will, we will address it, have some folks look at it, see what kind of remedy we can come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to, once Drew and the Public Works Director look at it, if they can't come to, uh, consensus on what to help, I'd like Drew to consult Lane Group.
Yeah.
If it's not something that we think we can handle in-house.
This is a problem, other places, it's a problem where we live. It, the water ran right up in our building Saturday night. And it collects there in the creek, like he said, it's still flowing to take more water. But it somehow, it's coming down and just running on the lowest places that it's.
It's coming down, it's coming down that valley from behind Coop and up Gilmer Street there, Drew. We've had that, it's, we've had that issue too. I mean, it's, it's jumped, it's jumped the pipe. We've looked at there and it's been across Main Street, I mean, the ditch side of the dam. So, we'll look at those things, okay? All right, Miss Keen, who are you, I'm sorry, you're, are you with an organization?
I'm not, I'm here for, uh, to present some information about a website for the Russell Theater.
I believe we need to move that out of her way.
Where'd you put that in?
I'm sorry, I should have.
No, you're fine, don't worry.
Elizabeth, I didn't know you were back here.
Yeah.
Where, where are you living?
At Anvindon.
Oh, okay.
Hey Mayor, a little background, uh, Janice, Mr. Janice and myself, we met with Elizabeth about two weeks ago to discuss developing a website for, I asked Janice to come because she's had trouble with the town website some too. So we discussed the town website and we need to develop a, a Russell Theater website at some point. So, uh, it was just stuff we talked about and she's put together a little proposal just for the theater.
So today we'll talk just, uh.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth. This way, this is for the theater. Or what about our regular website, town website, is it?
Well, we're just sort of, we've got it up and going. We don't have anything up and going for the Russell.
All right, got you.
So we want to try to get that Russell working going and then she can help us with the, the town website.
All right, sorry.
So we'll talk to you a little bit tonight about just the services and skills that I offer as a technical communicator and web designer. I'll show you a few mockups here, just a little overview of my presentation there. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Elizabeth Keen, I'm a native of Lebanon, Virginia, graduated Lebanon High School, several years ago now, and spent some time in Harrisonburg, Virginia. Uh, went to James Madison University and got degrees in writing, rhetoric, and technical communication. And have been teaching at the college level there for the last ten, twelve years and doing technical writing consulting work on the side as a, as a consulting job. So a lot of people ask me, what does that mean, right, what do you, what do you even do? So I thought I'd put a little slide in here telling you a little bit about it. So writing obviously is, is the process of putting written word down. Rhetoric involves the art of persuading through the written word and the spoken word and through visuals. And technical communication is kind of putting all of that together. Uh, a type of specialized writing designed to focus on real world needs for real world audiences. So technical writers do a lot of different work. Uh, we can certainly do websites, we can do posters, flyers, brochures, pretty much anything that involves communication, uh, graphics, layout, and things of that nature. So I come with all of these skills, I offer all of these skills to you, however you may need them or choose to mix and match them. Uh, Shay and I have talked about specifically the website for the theater. We talked about some prospects for the town's website as well, so I have some web design skills to offer. I also come with graphic design skills and branding and identity work such as logos, social media stuff. I manage several different social media clients, um, photography and videography as well, and then of course updating the, the written content. Talked a little bit about this already, but I've been doing this for at least fifteen years. Told you about some of the skills and expertise already. And it is an exciting opportunity for me to be able to work on a project back at home. Uh, as, as Mr. Doby said, he said, didn't realize you were back here. Uh, I moved, moved back to the area through the pandemic and work out of my home office now in Anvindon, teaching still for JMU remotely and doing this consulting work on the side. So some things that we talked about in our initial meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, were just some basic website needs for the theater. A homepage or a landing page, a place that, you know, someone can search the Russell Theater and arrive at a destination and get some basic information. Uh, we want to keep things easy and logical in terms of website navigation. We don't want a ton of bells and whistles, we don't want a ton of, uh, you know, words and pictures in a distracting way. So really prioritize how streamlined things and keep things simple. We talked a little bit about just a basic about page, talking about the history of the building, uh, the recent renovations and some of the future directions for the, for the facility. And then we talked about needing some sort of integrated calendar so that folks can see and look ahead for upcoming events, uh, and different types of events, so ranging from movies to, you know, small groups performing music, open mic night, whatever type of events that might be. A need for integrated ticket sales, and so there's already been a purchase through a, a provider called Ticket Spice for doing the backend side of ticket sales. So that's managed through a, a third party plugin and that will integrate well with the website. And then of course, uh, promoting upcoming events and things of that nature. So in preparing to talk to you all a little bit and make just kind of a really basic mockup for today, I looked at some other comparable sites around the area. The Lyric Theater in St. Paul has a website that is a little embarrassing. Uh, that's just a screen grab of the very first landing page, so we want to do better than that. Another one that I found is the Lincoln Theater in Marion, it's a little bit better, but still very basic. So it kind of has that sort of look and feel to it. And then, uh, the Millwall Theater, which I didn't know about until I was researching for this presentation, but out of with, well, they have a similar type venue. And they seem to be doing a little bit more in terms of promotion, they had a little bit more Facebook presence. So that's just a little glimpse of what their landing page looks like. So we would hope to purchase the russeltheater.org, which right now the price for that domain name is ten dollars for the first year, and then it goes up incrementally. And that's not something through me individually, that's through a domain hosting site. Um, GoDaddy is the go-to standard. So anybody could purchase any website and domain that they want, but that's the one we were hoping to purchase for this project, makes most sense. And then here's just some basic mockup, a little bit of an idea of what things might look like at the Russell Theater there at the top, it's really teeny tiny on this screen, but, uh, the logo, which is basically the signage for the theater, some basic navigation. Um, and all this can move around a little bit, we'll have further conversations if you decide to hire me to do this project. But basic overview there, um, front and center, upcoming events, got a little popcorn bucket there for movies. We have the first performance coming up in a couple of weeks, advertised there front and center. Uh, just gave you a big picture of a microphone there for some other type of event. And then a calendar feature. And then if we scroll on down, we could have a little blur, you know, of about text and have some photos, things like that. Have a space for reviews or something of that nature. If there's community partners and sponsors that either you want to sell some sort of advertising to or you want to promote the fact that, you know, they have donated in some type of way for community events, you could feature those down there at the bottom. And then some additional navigation down there at the bottom of the footer with the physical address, phone number, email, contact, just kind of basic stuff that you expect there on the footer and, uh, connecting out to social media. So that's a little more zoomed in view of the home section. Calendar. Don't even try to read it, it's just Latin filter text, I didn't write anything for today. So in terms of pricing, this is just kind of a basic idea of cost. My hourly rate is seventy-five dollars an hour if it were an expedited situation, and that is a possibility. If you decide that's what you need, um, that could go up to a hundred an hour with a minimum commitment of forty hours. So that puts you at the very low end of three thousand dollars for, um, you know, basic website build out with the integration of the ticketing, with the calendar feature, with some basic photography and branding and a little bit of written content. Takes thirty hours or one, you know, full eight-five work week to produce something of that level. And then there's additional things that you could do on top of that, ranging up to, uh, you know, well, the limit is kind of endless, I guess, but, uh, I don't see this project ever going beyond, you know, about eight or ten thousand truly. But if you decided that you wanted some additional graphics, some additional photography, some additional videography, things of that nature, you could go in that, in that direction. So this is just sort of a basic breakdown of hours, and then hours equated to, of course, time and money. So on the low end, you know, it's about sixty hours, somewhere in that forty to sixty range is what I'm thinking that it would take to develop what you're asking for. On the upper end, really the big difference, kind of circle it there, is here in additional creation. If you wanted additional photography, if you wanted additional videography, if you wanted me to help manage social media, things of that nature, then that's where that can get a little more, you know, involved and pricey. It's not a, you know, you're not having to make a decision today, you can choose what you want. I'm just telling you, those are some skills and purposes that I offer depending on the scope and the needs of the town and of the theater. And there's my contact info for you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Do you maintain technical assistance?
I would.
So if, if you remember this, does Shay contact you with what we need done?
So.
Is that part of the, of the deal here?
Yes, depending on, you know, the needs of Shay's needs, town's needs, the theater's needs. We hope to set these up so that day-to-day maintenance can be handled in-house.
Yeah, that's one thing we discussed was making it simple enough to where if I need to go in, in there and update the schedule, I can simply go in there and update the schedule, I don't have to say, hey, can you update my schedule?
Yeah, that's what.
Because that's, that causes fees to go up and all that. So if I can handle it in-house, so we want, I ask her to build something simple, get us started, that I can go in there, I can tweak, I can play with, I can put stuff in as well. And if it's something major that we need to do, then we can call on her to help us out. But we want it basic enough to where I can go in there, I can put the next show that's coming. If something gets canceled, I can say, this show got canceled, we're doing this one instead, you know, stuff like that. So we're wanting to create a basic set of, that's simplified enough to where she can teach me how to go in there.
That's just what I was going to say, with that initial setup and design, I would definitely spend some time sitting down, give a little bit of training, if here's how the site works, here's, you know, some basic things are going to be updated fairly frequently, and then of course be on call for, for your needs.
Okay, well, Elizabeth, first of all, looking back on the area, I know, I know you love that. But we'll discuss this amongst the government body and we'll talk to Drew and Shay for a little, see what direction we wish to go, okay? Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay. The next item, is this the only bid that we have, Drew, I guess, for the bridge inspection?
Yes, sir.
Diane, this is Phil Schwartz and Associates, and I'm pretty sure he's done this before. Well, this bridge inspections, do you work with JF and all those folks to be, uh, over with this as far as the bridges?
We are connected, this one. But we did advertise, uh, the mock for these and the rest of this, the three other bridges.
Just, Diane, get to the price here. Am I reading this right, Drew, what, there? Make sure it's right. I will, so this is a three-year cycle?
Correct, yes, sir.
So that's for this year.
Yep, and that's all of these bridges for this week, just this period, you know, they all come in.
All right, so.
Bridges we love. At the inspection, we have seven.
Six, seven. Hey, Diane, the year, twenty twenty-three. Six bridges. Seven thousand seventy dollars. Twenty twenty-four is one bridge. Twenty-six, seven. And twenty twenty-five. Six bridges, seventy-six, thirty. And these are required, by the way, by the Virginia Department of Inspectoration.
And this is inspection, I'm prepared. Just to give us a follow-up on. We'll be in inspection report.
Schwartz and Associates.
That's it, Mr. Yumler.
I'll move to approve that bid, Mayor.
For a second?
I'll say.
Motion to second any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The others say aye. Can you give it, uh, down with this?
They got Lynchburg, Drew?
I think so, yeah, I was the last. Tonight's day, we've been fresh after the, had it advertised for months. Last time we did it, we tried to tie some one way.
Okay, I'm just, it's a, it's almost a same source, ignore it. Red here. You're up, Mr. Schwartz, Town Manager's report. Now, probably is.
Good evening, everyone. A few things on my Town Manager's report this week. First thing I have on there for business is Keith Iris' red shop can pay him a little taxes for his common housing. For the town to ask for consideration on waiving those taxes for, uh, kids in place, apartments, and Fox Meadows apartments.
That's an annual request.
I'll move that anyway, sir.
Is there a motion?
Settle it, Mayor.
For a second. Second. Second, Mr. Jackson, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Those same side.
Thank you very much. Next thing is close session, third one down is the Richardson Wayland, electrical quote, this is a preventative maintenance quote, it's in the information section of the package. I talked to a couple of the street park guys, they, Richardson Wayland hasn't been in to look at these in probably four or five years, it's all of our street lights, five street lights in the neighborhood. And the preventative maintenance, also changing the filters and cleaning the cabins. I reached out just to get a price, this price came back a little higher than what I was expecting, but after talking with all the street park guys, they, they do advise that we do it. I'm not advising that we have to do it right now, I wanted to get a price, this, I think, can be something, if the council's willing, that I think it's something that we could wait on to maybe after winter, see how bad of a winter we have, but we can use VDOT money on this. So if we wanted to wait around to springtime and see what we had left over, to go towards that VDOT, that's an option too. But I think it does need to be done, whether it's now or then.
You know, one time, Drew, I was thinking Scott hit me out here, I thought we had a, like a maintenance contractor through anybody, did we?
I looked, tracked down one, it's a yearly contract, we had a little install.
Because we've got the, we've got all these stations, those boxes, because we've called them, I know you've called them in on the light signals, they're the ones we always got.
They are, but that's not under contract, that's always getting charged for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is this a, is this a, is this a one-time deal?
This is basically a one-time deal, it's a yearly contractor, they'll come in and maintenance and change their filters, but if they find anything else, that's, that's wrong with those, that's not included in the contract.
Let's do that.
It's minor maintenance. I pulled two previous invoices, Mayor, from Richardson Wayland, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, and it looks like they've gone up about forty percent on cost.
One of those, probably, I tried, I looked back and tried to find, one of them, I could find was the paints, on one side of, and I think it came to Hollins Drive.
That's apparently substantial. I know we had them priced painting the red light poles black, and we decided to quote that they sent us for that, that we would do it in-house, which we did, bought the materials and do it ourselves, yes, due to the fact it would be substantially expensive. I don't know who else is out there to do it, I know that they've always done it, of course, in the past, but, it seems like a pretty solid increase to just do minor maintenance. And in typical, you have ma- minor maintenance, they find something that needs to be repaired or replaced.
But you're thinking about maybe April 1st of the year?
Well, since, it's available for VDOT funding, but I would hate to spend this time on VDOT funding and then just have a terrible winter where it's been tons of money on salt and guys to straight weather.
Did you put this out to bill?
I, this is, yeah, we, we didn't bid, no, we didn't do the advertisement, no. We called Richardson Wayland, they came back, and once I seen this, I called Jeff McCann to see if he had anything else, and they, VDOT didn't know of anyone else.
We, we had to drag solicit to get them to put in the, put in the current, that's cool lights, yeah.
Everybody I found out was, I think it was a group out of Arizona and a group out of California.
Yeah. Mine only thought Drew and Elijah is, I think we need to do preventative maintenance based on VDOT's suggestion on those lights, and with that being said, I'd like to authorize, Drew, to move forward up to this amount based on VDOT's recommendation, on how often, you know, those need to be maintained, and work with the Public Works Director on getting that completed, whenever it needs to get done, but it's this fiscal, I mean, within this fiscal year, if needed, and if not, whenever VDOT suggests that maintenance needs to be done on these lights.
Well, as we all know, live here in town, all of us, the lights that we have, Drew, it's got every one of our crucial areas of town. Every intersection, it's the road, right here, Clinton Road, seventy-one, you know, anytime we have a problem, we can't wait three weeks to fix it. So, I agree, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, and the forty percent, I think it's one, I think it's on the show in town again, I mean, unfortunately, but if we don't need to do the maintenance, then we don't need to do it, but if it's, if it's recommended, Elijah, don't you think we ought to get it done with the VDOT funds?
I do one hundred percent. The only, I, I just wanted to present the fact that I did pull two previous invoices from them, and it's like it's about a forty percent increase, just so you all would understand there is a substantial increase. No, I agree one hundred percent with what Mr. Younger says as far as maintaining these things and using VDOT funds, which we've always known that we can use VDOT funds, because preventative maintenance is the key to not having issues at the wrong time, so I agree with preventative maintenance. Drew, I also would like to pretty well reiterate what you were saying as far as doing that in the springtime, whether it be early spring or late spring, due to the fact of salt usage during winter. So, I don't think it's a ha- I don't think it's, this is a have-to now, I don't even think it's a have-to this fiscal year, but if we can, and it's in the budget, and we need to utilize those funds, I think we'd do it after we get to the winter, so we know how mu- you know, how much salt, how much overtime, whether we use on labor as far as wintertime goes.
Well, something goes then before winter.
Yeah, we're doing that now, though, we keep using, and this may be, this may be a situation where we set the schedule like our bridges, Drew. That's a repair, that's a real deal repair in like a maintenance situation, they're just doing preventative maintenance.
So what you said, you know, maybe, well, maybe we do need to...
Basically, on VDOT's recommendation, I'm sure it'll be set up on the schedule.
Schedule, okay.
Might be, you know, try to get them done over the course of three years, or two years, or four years, whatever they're ready to be in.
We need some authorization from the council for Drew to move forward, so, is that a motion, or Drew's got the motion? Or am I having a motion? You got it, for a second?
I'll say. For maintenance, bridge and water, Richardson, yes.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Those same side. Continue for two, Drew, if you want to press it.
Next item is Homestead Drive, revisiting that, senior residents are interested in looking at possible paving of that road, doing the, like the county had done before, the, what do you call that, tax special, special assessment? Yep. So I've been in touch with a couple of the residents up there, again, trying to get them just a ballpark figure of what it might cost, but we go on their personal properties, and we went forward with that, so I had Jeff McCann revisit that, and the letter in the data information packet as well, it says it's around three hundred and fifty thousand, Rock City's still a rough area, so three hundred and fifty thousand about stormwater, he doesn't seem, he has, he wouldn't be surprised if it's closer to four or five hundred thousand dollars for the entire project. So I have passed this information along the filter, but a lot of these kind of in so, it's person for, for that area. I gave them a copy of this letter for everyone, I think they're gonna meet and see if this is a number that they would even like to entertain, to even move forward, so I was just updating on that, that probably it's not being forgotten, but right now, we're gonna meet and see if they'd like to...
The rest, it's up, we're gonna look, it's up.
And what I, what I will follow up on in that neighborhood, Mayor, was just what Drew was talking about stormwater runoff, just like Mr. Podmer brought to our attention earlier Saturday, that maybe the lower waters could not handle any more water. So now, if you're directing it from on top of a hill, in a ditch, to a lower ditch, and we're gonna, we will have to do something with stormwater runoff.
Yeah, and that was actually, they did, we, that's the worst I've seen in our area, and some of those jars were completely under, and that was Saturday evening, actually, I'd, it's a Saturday evening, on the rain day, you have to add two point seven inches.
To, to water plant, in the last hour?
No, today, it's twenty-four hour rain day.
Yeah, it was mostly an hour.
It seemed like it was an hour.
I mean, it's twenty-four day, but it rained for twenty-four hours.
I thought it.
It was almost a cloud burst.
It was a crazy storm, I know that.
It was pretty rough.
Okay.
And then my last item on my report is our victory distance lead copper. I met with the lane group over five, we had a really good meeting for a couple of hours over there, seemed like it's kind of a perfect storm, the Esri software we bought, and the GIS, and the texting system are looking at going to reach citizens, of us being able to do this in-house, and partner with the lane group, and their GIS guy. So I had Mike, Matt, the lane group brought me up a proposal for that, which you just got back to me today, so I don't have a copy of it for you guys, but I can pass it around. Basically, their fee, their entire fee would be a thirty thousand dollar fee for us to work with them, twenty-five hundred dollars of that would be them applying for funding, good funding that's coming back, so we're hoping that this entire fee will be recovered with, with funds. The one twenty water comes to a total of around thirty-one thousand six...
I'm not agreeing with that petition, but that sounds lower than the lane group's quota.
Correct, it's thirty-one thousand six eighty-six to go with one twenty water, the lane group is forty thousand dollars, with twenty-five hundred of that being for the grant application.
I'd like to go in negotiations with lane group, if we can get that in.
I'd like to be able to talk to Matthew a little bit, you been dealing, who, who's this from?
This is from Matthew, Chris, and Mark Osborn.
Chris, was it Chris, the lead guy on this project?
Matthew, actually, the lead, the lead, one I've been talking to is Matthew Lang, but the lead guy that we'll be working with is Adam Craig.
All right, let me, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk to Matthew.
Okay.
I had a little discussion with him, since he's already our engineer, maybe to, to go to it a little bit.
With that being said, I feel like one of these two options, we're gonna have to go with.
October, right?
You're pushing it. Is it a possibility to get approval up to this price if the lane group gets to it? So we don't have to come back and approve that bid.
You want to go back and redo that real slow?
If the lane group is able to get where we, where we're an idea, we have a number, if the lane group gets to, that can be approved for me to move forward with, instead of waiting until October.
Well, council, I could talk to Matt, won't be, I mean, one of the simplest things there's probably, let me talk to him, let them see if they'll come with a proposal, then I can call the council, that's what y'all will do.
Okay.
Does that work, there, Matt?
Special call, council.
Yeah, I'll just, call me to report to, to give you...
That worked.
You're stressing a little, Drew, over this, is it pushing?
It's getting pushed, yeah.
Do you think the EPA will let, correct?
Correct. It's, it is, it is a year open, I mean, it's a year away, but that's a lot of work.
I know it is.
It is, and I understand your situation, Drew, I, I respect you wanting to get ahead of it.
What I mentioned before, I think the EPA dumped all this on all municipalities all at once, they should have done it back when we received federal funds for ARPA, more cents to me, but, that's okay. But I have a feeling that once, once those deadlines start approaching, they're gonna get real lenient on, on who gets funded and who's not doing anything. We're fortunate enough to where we actually have the resources to move forward and pay for engineering groups to help with these things. I may be wrong, but I do believe that if they see that we are attempting to get this taken care of, they're gonna be very lenient, because I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot of local municipalities that can't even afford to do it, period, and I think there's gonna be some grants that come along here with that.
There's, there's one that's opening up right now, that lane group is, they're right to funding that.
Is it specific to this, this, to this item, lead copper?
The inventory side, not the construction, but the inventory they're working on right now.
You have any idea what the full funding is gonna be, as they say?
Forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
But I appreciate you, I appreciate you continually following up on this, I'm only glad it's for tourist citizens.
No problem. That's all I had, other, sorry, one more thing I need to add on there, we had a Parks and Rec Theater meeting the other day, we need to discuss parking, yeah. So I'm good unless there's any questions.
Follow-up, you're doing a great job on lead copper, I know you spent countless hours, you and Chris.
Chris died, that was just...
Yep. I've, I've sent him a message too, but, thanks, and I, I understand that it's coming quick. I've talked to other places too, and it's coming quick, I appreciate it.
I'll let go back to it, about some of my colleagues, married this way, and a lot of them are really happy, and honest about it. It's kind of like the EPA said, oh, by the way, you know what I mean? Shoot, okay, anything else for Drew?
I have a couple things, Mayor. I noticed on the AP report, AP report where we paid for trash services for the events, since we've got those invoices, do you care to kind of do an analysis first, last year when we pay employees, I mean, I'm talking not just hourly wage, but the benefits and the tax match, FICA, everything, that way we, as a council, can understand exactly what we're saving, or exactly what we're not saving by doing that. One more thing, I was contacted through social media, and it wasn't privately, it was publicly, and I was tagged in a post that was fairly to the point, there was some judgments made in that post, but Mr. Jeff Garrett had an issue with his water bill, and he was fairly opinionated about that, and he asked for me to give him a call to discuss that. I spoke with him for probably an hour and forty minutes after a committee meeting we had here one night, and he was fairly upset with his water meter being bad, and he blamed the town, and the entire council, and the mayor, and yourself, the town manager, and several people, and I tried to, I tried to minimize and tried to be civil about, you know, speaking to him, and he was professional once he understood that, you know, we were gonna work to try to figure out the issue that he had, or if it was on our end, and fix the issue. I know that you gave him some water credits, can you follow up on what we've done for Mr. Garrett?
So we gave him some water credits for the meter misreading, we replaced the meter, we went back out, and it was still reading high throughout the weekend, so Monday, we went back out, met with Jeff, he wasn't home, and the meter was still reading, so, went to ask him, called him once he got home, he called him once he got home, he cut his whole home cut off, off, and the meter stopped, so we were out there for probably an hour or so, trying to figure out where it could come from. Once the water stopped in the garage, he was kind of hearing it coming down through a section in the garage, and he had actually a failing valve on the toilet, so it was running through the toilet, it wasn't filling up a tank, but it just went into the bowl, and just came leaking out, so it couldn't, it couldn't get a leak, he couldn't find a leak, it was basically just running through the toilet.
And he is aware?
He is, yeah.
And what is, I mean, is he doing anything to prevent that?
He, yeah, he repaired, yeah, he repaired everything, I went back out, asked him to call him, he repaired it, he repaired everything, and I went back out and the meter stopped moving, so, he's good.
So I can follow up with Mr. Garrett, and everything's good?
Everything's fixed.
I appreciate you taking care of it.
Not a problem.
So hang on a minute, so we went above and beyond, and got dogged, and...
You got dogged first.
And it, and it was not even hour, hour for hour, so he received credits for, for your, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. I got, I got the picture.
You're right.
Okay. But it is, but it, I mean, I appreciate you following up on that, Brad, because it was fairly derogatory and to the point, even on yourself, as far as being disrespectful, and I had a hard time not, not following up them, not contacting Mr. Garrett, because it needed to be discussed.
Yeah, it was, it was a little up there, I said, I don't have social media a lot for that reason, but since then, once we were up there, we're working on it, being respectful, all respectful, all, all speech.
To put that aside, I know people's emotions get the best of them, put that aside, as a professional water installer and septic installer, our guys at the town... Um, as a professional water installer and septic installer, um, our guys at the town, at the drop of a hat, if we called, they were there, and they're excellent at what they do, so.
They are.
Um, I, I had seen that also, but I really doubted that our leader or our guys weren't doing what they needed to do, so. I'm just glad it's all resolved, but our guys are top-notch in that department, and I, I don't go to too many locality where they're any better than that.
They're very responsible, very professional, what they're doing, good, yeah.
They do, and they, and they do a great job, and, I mean, all the town employees do a great job, but we replaced a two hundred dollar meter on the fact that we were demanded to replace it because it was known it was our fault, and now I'm hearing that it was not our fault, it was due to a valve on the toilet.
And usually, and that's, and that's why a meter replacement's the very last thing we like to do, because once you replace it, it's done, can't just take one out and, and put the old one back in, it's, it's trash. Um, but the, what it was, was the valve valve was turned off to the toilet, so we were guaranteed it wasn't running through the toilet, that the valve valve was turned off the toilet, it was actually a valve.
Well, I appreciate you following up with it, appreciate you taking care of that, and, uh, you guys always being professional, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Good job.
Two biscuits?
Just a few things, I first, I appreciate everything that you're going for us, just to let you know a few of the numbers for the month of August, we had thirty-eight total summonses written for the month, nineteen total arrests, seven total illegal crashes, responded to eleven calls to, for bogus assist, and for the month of August, we responded to five hundred and seventy-seven total calls for service. Um, a few things I'd like you to know about, of course, we had the, uh, we had the beach party interacted with, um, some community policing aspects, myself and a couple officers participated in the mighty warriors baseball game out here, we really appreciate, uh, everybody that does do that, so that was a great thing. Uh, we worked with the schools on some of the back-to-school bashes, meet the teacher nights, we went up, and then, of course, the walk-through for the ball games and stuff we're on that. I want to let you know, I talked to you last, last month a little bit about the handle of care project we were doing, we were going to start with, and that's going really well, and remember what that was, that's the thing where we started initiative with, um, and kind of, you guys know what that is, we, we put a policy in place of where if officers respond to a house that has a child present, we're going to notify the school the next day, not of what happened, just that officers interacting with the child. That way, if that child's having an off day, it don't just get jumped on, they get, and we, all we're going to do is just text the school and say, this may handle the care, and that way they can just kind of talk to them. We did start rolling that out this school year, and that's going to be great, um, that's a good one. Also, I would like to say that, um, to, to give a personal thank you to Mr. Linder and the automotive, I was able to attend the executive chief and sheriff summit last week, with, with over a hundred chiefs and sheriffs from around the area, Tennessee and Kentucky, and, uh, it was through a donation from Mr. Linder that I was able to go with no cost to the town, and so I appreciate that. Uh, during that, I got to network with several other chiefs about problems, local problems that we're having, and found out that we're not the ones having, so hopefully through that network, we can get some things rolling that can help us with some of these issues. Also got to do, to make a personal loan, set down with Attorney General Jesse Vieras to get some of his opinions on things that's affecting us, and, uh, that was a valuable conference, so thank you for that. Um, as you know, for three years now, we've had a problem with radios, we've not been able to communicate with the county, and you guys were, were more than generous in allowing us to purchase these radios almost over a year ago, if not. Prior to it, we finally got the last piece of that puzzle, it's shipping there, so we now have everything in place to start the install on our radio systems, and we're finally once again be able to communicate with the county, uh, so can't thank you guys enough for that. I know it was a long time ago when you guys let us write the check, but we just now finally got the last piece in. Thank y'all for that very much. Um, talked to Mr. Linder again about the, the, the training facility, that is, we're going now, we're, we're good. Uh, I think the town has to finish one small little project on electricity, but it's up, it's running to one of the nice hospitals I've been with, so, um, I think we're going to, we're going to do some stuff with the unions on that stuff, so, uh, I'll let Mr. discuss that with you guys later. But, um, one good thing about that is, you know, I've talked to the academy, and they're wanting to come up here maybe to see one with them, add some training, which would be great for us, because now if we got pre-impounded students in the academy, they stop in here and see if we have something like that, then they might be an attention grab, they're going to work there, so, they're reaching out, so thank you for that. Uh, one last thing I'd like you to know about, this is a pro, this is a program I'd like to start and just get your opinion on it. I, I did start it in the academy, and I was glad to see we have some pastors here, because your opinion would be greatly needed here. But, um, one thing I did with this last academy is I contacted, uh, Mr. Kendry Brown, and I asked him if he would sponsor Officer Hilbert in the academy, and by sponsoring that, all I said was, would you just ask your church to commit to pray for Officer Hilbert, you know, that's he'd just pray for, send her a card to the academy, let her know you're in care of her. And speaking with her, and then, of course, at graduation, we, we presented her with the Bible and things for the church. She said that was tremendous. So I would like to roll out that program for the police department, I mean, I would like to contact the churches and see if they would commit to take one officer of the police department to just sponsor that. And by sponsoring all of them is just commit, ask the church to pray for that officer, dear church. Maybe send them a card once a month, every now and again, to support the area, I think they'd be invaluable for a while. I think Eric, I think that's something else, but with the success we had in the academy, I think it would be great to do it departmentally, so, um, with your guys' approval or blessing, I'd like to start contacting some of the churches and see if they'll do a lot of that.
Let's ask, Jeff, you're still a chaplain, who's the other one that's police?
Don C.
Don C.
Yeah.
And it's all C.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You probably would, I mean, if the groups have moved forward with this, I'd suggest to call, who's the man up at the ministerial association?
Jeff.
Jeff Kendrick.
Yeah, Cuba, Cuba's the president. It's Cuba now?
Yeah.
And maybe at least, I'm thinking, when they're getting, when y'all have a meeting there, get in front of you and make a presentation.
It was, it was very helpful for Kayla doing the academy.
I know, she spoke to it, she spoke to it.
Just seeing how much you helped here, I thought maybe department one would be great about that. Um, other than that, that's all I can, uh, any other questions?
I appreciate you for, uh, I was contacted by several of my neighbors in the manor, that there was an issue, um, with a vacant property and had some homeless individuals living there. Um, I notified the chief after the residents got ahold of me, and that morning, he was right on it, and we were able to, um, assist people getting out and clean the property up also, hopefully, hopefully sway them away, all things, but I know the neighbors were also grateful to us.
And I appreciate you letting us know about that, that's one of the things that we need, we need to get.
One more thing before you head off, um, and I'd kind of like to reach your graces on this before I put it in a form of emotion, um, but how do you feel about, I know that we're having some school resource officer, you know, issues as far as county wide guys, and that's pretty well their baby, but as far as us here in the town eleven, we've got the primary school, we've got the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, we also have a vocational school, uh, will there be any issues with, with us as a department, maybe trying to commit ten to fifteen hours a week, um, doing more community policing in those schools at random times?
Oh, absolutely, so what I've already done is, is I've made it mandatory that each officer spends, each officer makes two walkthroughs to, to the school, um, to each school, and what I've also done is I've got with Sheriff Watson, and I've got with the school resource officer sergeant, and I've told them, anytime your officer needs to leave the school, contact us, and we will send an officer to the school to replace him until he gets back, if he should get back. So, uh, yeah, absolutely, we're, we're in that direction, so, uh, no problem with it, um, you know, obviously, we're sort of running a skeleton crew, uh, skeleton crew there, so, you know, just say you commit ten to fifteen, I, I don't know if we can put a number on it, or what, or we're willing to make whatever we use to catch work.
If you're, if you're already implementing it, and you're doing the best that you all can as far as the numbers that we have to work with, and we're not overstapped here, um, there's nothing for me to put it in the form of motion if you already got it implemented, uh, I just wanted to, you know, just speak with the admins of, at these schools, and just, when, when would be the best time that, that you all feel more vulnerable than others? I mean, if the school resource officer leaves, maybe forty-five minutes to an hour after they leave, maybe, you know, just the presence of a police car in the high.
Hopefully, and, and this is, this is what we, we have put in play, and it's, to my knowledge, this is what we've not been able to miss any, but what we've put in play on there is if, if the school resource officer does need to leave the cars, and we send somebody, uh, whether it's myself, uh, one of the road guys, whatever, somebody does go, it's on, needs to leave, so.
So there's somebody there all the time already, so.
And then, uh, you know, we, it is mandatory that they, that each officer, well, anyway, you know, we try to have two officers per shift, and then plus, uh, myself and Miss Jensen, Monday through Friday, most of the time, so. So you're getting four officers making two walkthroughs at each school, so hopefully we're getting a good presence that the public can see, and the two possibly returning officers acting up there, we'll pick it up, and we'll give you say hello.
All I ask is that you do the best you can, but, uh, to follow up on that, we appreciate you, I mean, protecting our children's a big deal, and we appreciate you just taking care of that, when, when the county is, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. This time, Mr. Taylor, do you have anything?
There's a couple of things I need to discuss with you.
Closest?
Yes.
This time, we'll entertain a motion to go to executive session under section two point two dash three seven one one A, uh, dealing with personnel matters and legal counsel on that, uh, three, uh, two issues.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we've got a motion made.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we recognize Sherry from Janet Fields with Wendy's, the Wendy's Corporation, they made an eight thousand dollar donation to the Lebanon Police Department for that training facility, that was roughly two years ago, two and a half years ago.
Yep.
And through funding from the council and Harvard, the police department, and the streets and town guys, that thing is finally, all of the power being looked up is ready to be utilized. Um, if we could maybe get them to, to get a picture with the PD here, you can work with that and us present that to them, maybe at the next council meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Grab the resolution, maybe, Mayor?
Yeah, let's do a resolution, then, and we get together. Is that real?
Yes, sir. And that could have been accomplished without the match on the, so, thank you guys.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, Mayor, for personnel legal matters.
For a second.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Over, same side. We stand in executive session.